All right, and now we'll open the regular city council meeting in Lubbock City Council for July 8, 2025. The city council will now recess into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Codes, number 551.071 to consult with and seek the advice of our city attorney, and 551.074 to discuss personnel matters, and 551.087 to discuss economic development matters. The city council now is recessing at 1:04 PM.
All right, it's 1:49, and we're reconvening an open session, and we're going to take up a work session now for the 2025 legislative update, and I will call on the city manager to lead discussion of the results of the 89th Texas Legislative Session.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Going to go over certainly not an exhaustive list today, and of course, we'll end with the ever-fun special session that appears to be starting up. To kind of kick it off, this was an extremely busy legislative session. A little over 8,700 bills were filed. You may have seen a number as big as 11,000. That number is also correct, but those are more of your ceremonial resolutions and items like that. So there were 8,719 actionable bills and joint resolutions. Just under 2,200 of those were municipal or local government-related bills. So there was a lot going on just on our doorstep. All in, 1,231 of those items passed, 1,231 of the 8,700. So brings out an interesting statistic. About 13.9% of the bills passed this time. Even though this was the biggest filing since 1991, it equaled the lowest pass rate since 1991. I kind of stop there before we keep going. I do want to show some appreciation, offer some thanks. As we continue through this, you're going to see just how busy even at Lubbock's doorstep we were to go through this. Our local delegation, Senator Perry, Speaker Burrows, Representative Tepper, just tremendous, tremendous work on our behalf and certainly on the state's behalf, and sure want them to know how much we appreciate that. Equally as hardworking, we had our legislative committee consisting of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and council member Dr. Wilson, and they will likely testify that I kind of wore them out, especially as we got towards the end and things were literally running 20 hours a day, seven days a week. So to my committee, thank you to our local delegation, very, very much appreciated. You did well by Lubbock and by the state. Speaking of the state, here's some just general interest deals. Of course, these are the items that early on kind of take a lot of the air out of the room. Some of them get voted on, they're done, and you move on. A few of them continued until we got to the end of the 140 days. School property tax reform. This is a follow-up to what the legislature did two sessions ago, where they're basically increasing the exemption, and those lost dollars then from those local school districts are made up by state general revenue. So you hear that it's property tax reform. That is 100% true. It is unique to independent school districts, period. Water, huge wins, and in fact, we had a celebratory signing of Senate Bill 7 just here in Lubbock. So there is a constitutional amendment that will be on everybody's ballot the first Tuesday in November to create $1 billion net new dollars per year for a period of 20 years that would be used 50% to help work on and fund improvements to existing infrastructure. So your pumps, your pipes, your tanks, your towers, those kinds of things. And then 50% of those dollars, the other half, would be for new supply. And I think in Lubbock's case, and again, thank you to Senator Perry, he authored Senate Bill 7, reservoirs are an eligible use for new supply dollars from the state of Texas. Didn't start that way, but the senator led an effort to get those included. There are certainly qualifiers, which we totally agree with, but that's all good. Related to that, it's outside of Senate Bill 7, but related to that, there's an additional one-time $2.5 billion, and this is current money. It's not subject to the amendment. Current money that's going into the Texas Water Development Board, again, to keep working on the water needs of the state. So to Senator Perry, thanks for leading that, and I think you'll see Lubbock here in a few years under the reservoirs are eligible category. School funding, school choice, kind of a last-minute flurry of activity on the total THC ban, which ultimately was vetoed by the governor at the 11th hour on that, and then picked up and put on the special session call, and we'll do those here in a moment. I'm going to talk a few moments about just some city-related bills that did pass, only a couple that I'll talk about in particular detail, but please stop at any point. Stop me if you've got any particular questions. House Bill 24. This revised some of the procedures for very specific zone changes, and what you'll hear commonly talked about is it increased the protest threshold while it lowered the approval threshold. That's partly correct. So just for a moment. Today, we know that if at least the 20% of the owners of the land, not necessarily the lots, file a protest to a zone change, it puts the council in a position of a supermajority vote. That didn't really change. That part is still there. There's a new clause now that says if 60% of the area, so going by landmass, if 60% protest a zone change that is 200 feet within a boundary of 200 feet, excuse me. We'll back up, try that again.
It's getting you all choked up, isn't it?
Well, this is so emotional. Y'all have no idea how hard it is. Okay. If at least 60% of the area, so the landmass, extending 200 feet from the area of the proposed zone change, has the effect of allowing more residential development, unique to residential development, than the current zoning regulation, and, so new residential, and it does not allow additional commercial or industrial use unless that additional use is limited to the first floor only of a residential development and is not greater than 35%. So what does that sound like? High-density residential or mixed-use residential? So 60% within 200 feet, it's got to be residential, and it cannot increase commercial or industrial unless it's collared only to the first floor of such facility. Now, this doesn't make the most sense, but if you trigger that 60% residential, it's not commercial or industrial unless it's limited to the first floor, then the council passes with a 60% threshold. So you still have a kind of a plus one in there, but it's not the three-quarters from the 20%. So this one really sliced and diced. There's a lot going on out there. There's a lot of commentary. Different people are looking at it, but that is the words literally that come out of the enrolled summary for that one. So that's House Bill 24. House Bill 30 wasn't going to put this on there because it's usually not something that is going to come up, but the horrific events of late last week. House Bill 30 amends some of your tax rate formulas if you are in a declared disaster area. So what it does is it lifts some of the 3.5% thresholds off of an entity if they're in a declared disaster area. I have no idea what will happen with tax rates down in the hill country, but you've absolutely got areas that have been affected by disaster. House Bill 33, called the Uvalde Strong Act. This actually hits multiple pieces of the state codes. It is unique to school security, to law enforcement training, mental health resources for first responders. It also includes very specific public information officer training related to, of course, first preventing any such future occurrences, but in the horrible condition that it might, how you handle it after the fact. This bill's been a while coming, but it was a very well-written bill. We're on top of what it'll need to do for us. Think it would be relevant to note, we're probably over three-quarters percent compliant even before this one had been written. House Bill 198, this is related to doing recurring cancer screenings for firefighters. This goes back to presumptive illnesses. Key thing on there, Lubbock has the LifeScan program that we offer to 100% of our fire department every year. We're actually already doing more than that law will require. 223, this establishes that if a municipality is to hire lobbying government relations or anything similar, that now has to be done by a competitive bid, where prior to this bill, you could not do this by competitive bidding. So if you recall last fall, when we selected our consultant, that was a request for proposals, and the driving factors behind an RFP are not price. This turns that around. We do not use the RFP. You say, this is what I want. What will you charge me? That's the end of that particular selection process. So this one reversed. House Bill 331, this is again to help protect our first responders, also related to the presumptive illnesses bill. This adds a heart attack or a stroke if the event occurs within eight hours after a duty shift. Key, especially for our responders, this is going to increase their workers' compensation eligibility if something like this were to occur. House Bill 554, we now have another week for fireworks sales. So June 14 to June 19 next year, there will be legal fireworks sales. That's in addition to New Year's and 4th of July sales. Moving, sorry, moving right along. 1522 is a change to how we post open meetings, the meeting we sit in today. Simple version, today, any posted meeting of a deliberative body is done seven, minimum of 72 hours in advance. The new bill is three business days in advance. So as we head towards September the 1st, y'all are going to start seeing, and we'll send out memos. You're going to see a lot of changes in how things come out for us. So in effect, we're going to have to post late on Wednesday for y'all to have a Tuesday city council meeting. So just know that that's coming. 2513, this is an overdue item. Really glad the legislature picked it up. It's related to military leave for fire departments. The statute has never properly accounted for the traditional 24 or 48-hour shifts for the firefighters to do military leave. It does now. 2844, you will see and hear a lot about this one. This bill actually has multiple sections that are effective at different periods of time. Mobile food vendors. In short, this will now say a licensed mobile food vendor from any one jurisdiction is licensed in all jurisdictions. So a mobile food vendor licensed in Lubbock would be licensed for they to drive to Abilene or to Austin, and vice versa on that. There's also some changes to inspections and so forth. It actually puts a bigger burden back on the state. They have not written their rules, so they have the law. Now they have to write the rules, and as we see those come out, we'll be able to tell y'all what that might do to us. House Bill 4219, this really is just a clarification of the existing 10-business-day response. Don't think it changes anything with how we handle Public Information Act requests, but it is a new law. 4506 would allow us to send zoning-related notices electronically if a recipient opts in to doing that. So this is in the direct mail portion of where we do a notification. Senate Bill 15, this one, a whole lot of time, a whole lot of back and forth that went back on this one. This was called the tiny lot bill. When Senate Bill 15 was filed, it would have said that you would have to allow as a zoning district on an unplatted piece of property residential lots that were not larger than 1,400 square feet, 1,400 square feet, for the whole lot. And then it had two additional qualifiers. One was width, one was depth, and the width of the lot was you couldn't require more than 20 or longer than 60, deeper. So this one continued all the way through, literally was passed out on the last weekend. The final version says the minimum lot size for these deals, five acres unplatted, set up to do this, is now 3,000 square foot, and the minimum width is 30 square foot. So one of the key tactics we used in trying to educate and work on this one was that 20-foot lot width. A half-ton four-wheel-drive short box pickup that is all over this city is 21 and 1/2 feet long. So one vehicle parked in front of the house was wider than the whole lot was. There was also originally a density standard in here, and as such, our ability to be able, not just for folks to have a good enjoyable neighborhood, but to provide fire, police, EMS, really to get utility trucks in and out to work on those neighborhoods would have been very, very difficult. At 3,000 square feet, that's only 500 square feet smaller than what we currently allow a development to get down to. So it's going to be an impact. It is not near the burden that I think it was going to be. So a lot of help on that one, and I think we ended up about as good as we were going to get. Senate Bill 305, this is part of the moveover slowdown law, and this is largely related to the tragedy in level land a couple of years ago when the animal control officers were killed on the side of the highway. Those vehicles, plus now parking enforcement vehicles, are included in the moveover slowdown law. Senate Bill 506, just again redefining an existing piece of statute. When we put a ballot proposition question out, a street bond, has to be definite, it has to be certain, and it has to be neutral. Senate Bill 541, cottage food production operations. This has been a long-running activity at the legislature going back about four sessions. This one would allow your cottage food producers to sell products to vendors at wholesale with limited exceptions. So I think things maybe like raw milk. It also raises the monetary threshold that such a business can hit before they go into the regulated category, and it expanded the types of food that they can produce and sell. These are largely going to be unlicensed, unpermitted. That in no way means it's bad or unsafe food. I want to be clear on that. But it just puts a larger part of that industry below the licenser or the permitting threshold. 617, this is going to be an interesting one. If there is a proposed project that would convert an existing property to be a homeless shelter, so an onsite shelter, a zoning hearing on that would have to be conducted where that is going on. It has to be done within one mile of the location, and it has to be done 90 days beforehand. Still going to go through planning and zoning, still going to go through city council, but you're going to have that one hearing that is onsite or as close as you can get to onsite. 785, HUD code manufactured housing, what used to be called mobile homes. Under this new law, all municipalities will have to allow HUD code manufactured housing in at least one residential zoning district. And if you don't otherwise require a specific use permit for a home in that district, you will not require a specific use permit in this district. Now, the exceptions to this all default back to deed restrictions. In fact, there were numerous housing-related bills this session that pulled the authorities away from a locally-elected city council but left them inside of the deed restriction deal. And that's fine, but just know that as a city, we have no role in enforcing deed restrictions. That is entirely private party to private party. No part of that comes back to you. So this is one that we will be analyzing and making preparations. Ultimately, it'll come back to the council because you're going to have to modify at least one residential zoning district. Senate Bill 840, this is kind of, again, affordable housing or the housing affordability crisis was a big topic at the legislature, and there were a lot of bills this session related to that. This is one of them. This would allow either a mixed-use or a multifamily project to be built by right, meaning it does not need a zone change, in any area that's currently commercial, office, retail, or mixed-use. So this is potentially taking maybe an old office building that's not being used today or not being full. They could convert that either to mixed-use or to multifamily within that zoning district, and it doesn't need to go back to planning and zoning or back to the city council. Senate Bill 1173, another chance to call out Senator Perry. This has finally raised our competitive procurement limit from 50,000 to 100,000. It's been $50,000 since the 1980s. This raises it to 100. The example I used when I was asked questions about of it, you know, in the 90s, I could buy a pickup truck or a police car if I had to have one, not having to go through competitive procurement, not having to wait to bring it to a city council. Today, I couldn't do that with the $50,000 limits. So this is now $100,000 on that. So this one will be helpful and kind of speed the function of government in certain cases. All right, Senate Bill 1567. There were lots of names assigned to this. My favorite one was frat houses for all. Got used quite a bit during the session. The original version of this bill said a home rule municipality with a university campus could not regulate single-family residential occupancy in any fashion. Yes, there was a mathematical formula in there, but for those of you that have been to my office, my office would have allowed either 10 or 11 people to live in it. So pretty tough way it was done. Lot of hard work, a lot of people working late in the session on this. We are not included. I want to be clear. Lubbock is not included in this bill, and in fact, there's now only two cities in Texas that fall into the bracket for this bill, and one of them is College Station. The other one is not Lubbock. Okay, 1833. If you use social media to assist in the delivery of a controlled substance, the penalty for that offense is increased. That is a common problem both in Lubbock and many cities throughout Texas. 1883, this actually in the future will apply to what y'all are going to do later today. So land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and impact fees, these would all have to be made publicly available at least 60 days before notice of a public hearing, and it changes the approval threshold to adopt impact fees. Statutorily changes the members of what we call here the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, and it also requires third-party audit every time you come back to work on impact fees. So this one was a big target bill. 1844, disannexation of certain areas for failure to provide services. In the past, disannexation, really struggling today. In the past, disannexation was pretty limited, and it required the person petitioning to be a registered voter. That has been changed to clarify that it's property owner. You're the owner of the property. Property was at one time annexed, and the municipality did not follow through with their original annexation agreement. You can petition to be removed. Also, this one drills down to where a single lot, so it's not an area that was annexed. You might have annexed what was the equivalent of five square blocks. A single lot by the property owner, if we've not met the agreement, can petition for disannexation. I don't think this is going to have much effect other than a couple of very targeted locations in the state of Texas, certainly not in Lubbock. And remember that in the case of Lubbock, the provision of utilities is contingent upon being in the city limits. So that will still hold. Senate Bill 1948 prohibits the installation, actually the requirement to install fire sprinklers in certain agriculture facilities. Some of those pretty seem to be logical and make sense. Open pole barns, things like that, basically non-residential. Certain kinds of agricultural storage facilities, though, are also now included in this, and you know, we've had some experience where some of those have gone wrong on us in the past. So doesn't affect existing, it affects future, but that one was one that came up that was a surprise. Not listed on here, there was a related bill that says we cannot require the adjacent right-of-way to an agricultural property to be mowed for weeds or tall grass. So that will generate some interesting discussions in the future. 2351 is concrete batch plants. And this has also been a bit of a running-gun battle at the legislature for a long period of time. Batch plants are necessary. You cannot keep a city functioning without having good concrete. What this one does, though, anytime the standard permits for a batch plant are renewed or updated, they will have to update their air emissions controls to meet whatever the current standard is. So I think this one, they struck a pretty good balance on, and these are issues that have arisen in Lubbock. We've worked on those. Almost to the end of this section, Senate Bill 2477 actually kind of goes back and matches the prior one with the commercial office zoning. This says that if buildings are going to be converted from office to residential, they can do that, and then there are certain building codes that will not apply as they do that. 2786, this is for first responders, and it exempts such from taking the Texas Success Initiative test as a condition of college entrance. So as all groups continue to work on furthering education and knowledge and improvement, this will make it easier for all of our responders to be able to do that. So those are our passed bills. I will stop. There's no questions. I'll go straight into what didn't pass. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Let me ask you one, Mr. Atkins. What is the procedure for, if someone petitions for a disannexation from the city, what's the process on that?
I would have to go pull the specifics, Mayor, but I remember it was very simple. Matt, do you recall? I think they just ask.
I guess my question is, yes, I know they just, they ask. Do we have to take a vote to approve it? Is it automatic if they ask?
It's like the ETJ bill in that respect. You have a period of time in which to act. I believe it's 60 days, and if you do not, then it automatically happens.
Okay. Yeah, it'll, it'll all go back, for disannexation, all go back to whatever your municipal services agreement was and what you agreed as far as to providing, if they're going to be disannexing for not providing any of the services that were in there. So that, and that was some previous legislation along with this one, will mean that we'll need to, for requests for annexation, look closely at our municipal services agreements to make sure that there are things that we can actually, that we actually can fulfill within the timeframe. But yeah, and it's, they have, it has to have been over a period of time. It's not immediate, and you can put in your municipal services agreement that period of time up to a certain date in order to provide the, whatever services there are.
Okay, thank you. I just don't want a patchwork of disannexed lots here and there, you know?
Right, understood.
And that creates so many logistical challenges if that were to happen.
I think the chances are of you having an individual lot in an area that's not having services, but there are other lots all around it, I mean,
That do have services.
That do have services. So I would think that would be probably not, not happen very much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, proceeding.
Okay. Jump into what either did not pass or won't apply to Lubbock. Tremendous number of bills related to city finances and to city taxation, ad verum taxation. Simple version, they pretty much all died as we went through. I do think they'll be back, but they pretty much all did die. There was a bill called Senate Bill 673 that by right would have allowed There was a bill called Senate Bill six seventy-three that by right would have allowed an accessory dwelling unit, what used to be called like a mother-in-law's quarters or something to that effect, on any residentially zoned property, and it really didn't respect setbacks or anything else. That one did not pass. Senate Bill fifteen sixty-seven, I've already talked about it, it's back on here. The floor amendment that changed those population brackets around was done by Representative Tepper. So great, great work there. Preemption, lot of bills were filed on preemption. The biggest one, the one that went the farthest, was Senate Bill twenty-eight fifty-eight. It does build on top of a bill passed in twenty-twenty-three. I would note the preemption statutes that were within it really were probably not the issue to us. We've not found concerns over the twenty-twenty-three preemption bill. Didn't really see them in this one. It's that second point that ended up being our issue. Says it reversed the burden of truth. What it did was declared you guilty until proven innocent. So if there was a complaint that a municipality had violated one of the preemption statutes, as soon as the Attorney General's Office opened an investigation, all of your sales tax was frozen and kept. Any state grants that you may participate in, for us, those are mainly public safety, mainly police, all of that stops. If ultimately you end up being able to prove, and again, the burden is reversed, we have to prove we didn't rather than they have to prove that you did. If after some period of time you get adjudicated by a court and they say, yeah, city, you did it right, those funds will get released. If not, the state got to keep most of them, and they came in and changed all of your tax rate calculations for a period of time going forward. So what the state is saying they have supremacy over as far as, you know, regulation, didn't see that as the issue. It's the reversing everything for what happens if somebody were to challenge you on that. That one did die. The anti-lobbying bill, what's commonly called the taxpayer-funded lobbying bill, that one also died. It actually died in a House committee as we got toward the end on there. That, though, goes right into those failed topics, and you can see the list there that we expect to return. Go down four bullet points on there, residential use on religious-owned land, that was a really unique bill that came out. Basically would have taken, if the property was owned by a qualified religious institution, you don't really have zoning on that anymore if they want to convert it to residential use. So it was treating certain property much different than it would treat any other property. There were quite a few bills, and they showed up in the financing, they showed up in the elections, they showed up several different places to, in effect, eliminate the May uniform election date. So it was not that long ago that cities, school districts, counties, you had four uniform election days spread evenly throughout the year. We have two now, May and November, and numerous bills would have basically said, no, we're going to do it all in November. So those have showed up with more and more frequency the last three sessions, so I think they're going to continue that push. Probably won't be all at once, but it will. They did, the legislature did extend the ability for cities that have May to move everything to November at the council's choice and to do that without having to go change your charter such. But those are out there, they're coming back. Private utility relocation at city cost. This was a pretty innocuous-looking bill when it started, but the way this one would have worked, and it did die, take one of your road bond projects, and we're going to expand, we're going to widen, we're going to pave a road that didn't, was dirt before. In all of your franchise agreements, which is how a private entity leases public property for private purposes, so think of all your underground utilities, all those franchise agreements say, okay, you have the right to be there, this is the fee that you pay, all is good, but in those situations to where us, as the property owner, needs to do something different, you will move your utilities to accommodate that. Still get to stay in the right-of-way, don't have to go find another easement, but you, the individual utility owner at your expense, will move that to accommodate our new road. This bill would have gone the other direction. If we went to take a two- or three-lane road to a five, and that was going to cover up some underground utility installations, we would have borne the cost to move the private utilities. Interesting about this, think of Loop Eighty-Eight. City had multiple utilities down there in state right-of-ways, had a right to be there, but the state needs to build a loop. We agree, we support it, we pay to move our utilities out of the way, still in their right-of-way, but not blocking their roads. So that one was really quiet, and then it blew up fast. Ultimately, it died. I do think it was likely a special interest bill, but I expect we're going to see that come back up again, probably in a regular session in the future. How did Lubbock do? I would suggest to you that Lubbock did phenomenally well in the legislative session. We sought for specific bills to be filed on our behalf, and we ultimately agreed to support two additional bills. We didn't sponsor them, we supported them, but they matched our legislative agenda. So we filed the project financing zone bill. Representative Tepper put that out there, it passed. We are the only new PFZ in the state of Texas. We're the only one that came out of the legislature. We ultimately ended up with Corpus Christi tagged onto our bill as an amendment. That was not a new PFZ, it was fixing the fact that, remember, these are three-mile circles? If the center of your circle is on the beach, half of your circle's in the ocean. So this fixed that for them. But in terms of new bills, new PFZs, we got the only one. We sought to extend the rebate, or to extend the period of time for which we could qualify to get a convention hotel rebate. We currently have that authority. It expires in August of twenty-twenty-seven. We wanted to go ahead and push the deadline out. That's the only one we didn't get. It died, we got the PFZ. There were a lot of discussions, which one is more timely, more important, the PFZ bill. So we'll bring that back in the next legislative session and keep moving. The third bill, this was to take the PUC, Public Utility Commission, out of the loop when you've got a city-to-city water or wastewater contract and somehow there's a dispute. So that was passed, it was originally filed as a House bill by Representative Tepper. That bill didn't make it out of committee. We were able to get it as a friendly amendment to one of Senator Perry's bills, Senate Bill seven forty. So we have that. So council, as you continue to have the request to try to assist our neighboring cities, just know now that that's between you as a city council and whomever we're working with as a city council, and the PUC is not in the middle of it. Number four was being able to exempt certain information, certain meetings that are largely related to cybersecurity from the Public Information Act. That passed. That one started off, and it was a good bill. By the time it went through the House and into the Senate and got done, the list of supporters on that went up exponentially. This has been a gap in how some of that information is treated, and I think our state recognized certain things do not benefit the public if we have to lay them up on the dais. So three out of four, it's a tremendous record, way higher than the overall success of the legislature. The two bills that we supported, First Responders Memorial Loop, filed by Senator Perry on behalf of some of our public responder groups, that passed, and there's a portion of the South Loop, the new South Loop Eighty-Eight, that will also be named the First Responders Memorial Loop. That bill will go into effect here very soon and probably signage hopefully by late this year, but not certain. The second one, also a bill Senator Perry filed, this is going to be very helpful to us. This allows a tiers or a TIF board or a PID board to have virtual meetings, and it will only require one of their members, whoever the chair or the president is, to be at the physical location. Public is still welcome, public has access to all the virtual participation as well, but we struggle to get quorums on a lot of these boards, many of the board members, because they have to represent property ownership, they're not here. It's hard to do that. Some of our TIFs, we have our legislative delegation as members, and it's hard for them to always be able to make the meetings. So Senator Perry put that one up, we provided support to it, we got those passed. So however you want to look at it, three out of four that we went after or five out of six in total. Lubbock had a very, very good legislative session. Taking us to July the twenty-first, there is now a special session teed up. The six items that are on here are what is in the current call for the, for the special session. These are all also the vetoes that Governor Abbott issued. So these six will come back up when they convene on July twenty-first. Special sessions are limited to thirty-day duration, and they are limited to only taking up items that the governor has listed on the call list. Takes you to the last comment there. There is a high probability that more items will be added. The two that we see in here are the most often, potential redistricting of the state, congressional redistricting, and the taxpayer-funded lobbying item. So Mayor, Council, that's the conclusion of what ended up being a pretty chaotic session, but if you've got any questions, I'll take them. If not, I'll be quiet.
Well, let me speak for myself, and I'm sure I speak for the council, too, when I say this. We appreciate all your hard work. This was my first opportunity to be involved in the legislative process since I've been on the city council and certainly as the mayor, because it only comes around every two years, thank goodness. And, you know, you've always heard the phrase, you really don't want to see how the sausage is made, but you, three of us at least, had a very firsthand seat at seeing how that sausage was made, and for our staff, and especially Jarrett, to keep track of those thousands and thousands of bills and how quickly they could move and change. You thought you had something nailed down on one day, and I'd get a text from him in the middle of the night almost or something like that, that this is all changed now, and here's, we've got to go down there and we've got to go talk to these people. So he really stayed on top of it. But I've also got to say a special thanks to our legislative group down there. Carl Tepper worked extremely hard with us and well with us, met with us, and he has excellent staff to get the changes we need to some of those bills, to make sure that, I mean, he's already said it, we came out so well on what we needed to see happen for this city out of that legislative session, and it's a tribute to his, to Jarrett's hard work, our Hans Scarborough team that worked for us down there, but especially to our, our legislators down there, Carl and his office and Parker, I just want to give a shout-out to Parker Strathatos and how hard he worked on stuff down there. And, of course, having the Speaker of the House didn't hurt anything at all, and he worked very well with us, and Bob Duncan, his assistant there, worked very well with us. And, of course, it's always great to have Charles Perry, who, who's been involved in water, which is so essential to us here, but he also listened to us, and oftentimes we, we had to get him to understand why we were for certain things, you know? Initially, it didn't, it wasn't apparent to him, but he listened well to us and understood what it was about some of the things we wanted to see passed that was important to us and worked very hard for us. So we are very fortunate to get what we got out of this. And I also want to appreciate our staff for coming forward with our cybersecurity bill, something that they saw, they realized this was an issue that could come up for the protection of our city and our members, and we got the bill written and introduced and, you know, something nobody else thought to put forward. But it got the support of almost everybody down there. They saw how important cybersecurity was for us so that bad actors out there can't get access to information about our infrastructure so they can attack it or our policy limits so they know what they need to ask us for when they make their demands. We now can keep that out of public information. So this was a great session for us, as, you know, we had to make several trips down there, but had great support here, great support down there, and I thank you, anybody else weigh into if they want to. All right, thank you very much. Let's take a brief break here, and we'll take about a ten-minute break, we'll be back. If everyone can get seated, we're going to start here again in a minute. All right, we'll now take up our ceremonial items, and at this point, I'm going to call on Reverend Father Alexander Cordos of the St. Catherine of Alexandria Orthodox Mission to lead us in our invocation, followed by our mayor pro tem, leading us in our pledges of allegiance to our United States and our Texas flag. Would you please stand as you are able?
Good afternoon to everyone, Mayor, members of the councils. In the art of this tradition, we are going to do introduction prayers over all of you, and I will use this opportunity to say a prayer also for those who departed from among us who perish in the floods in Texas, because I need, and I think that we need to keep their memory alive, and then you can continue with your work for the city of Lubbock. Blessed is our God, always, now, and ever and to the ages, amen. Glory to thee, our God, glory to thee. O heavenly King, that can force us, spirit of true, who art every heir and freest, fill us all things, thrash with blessing, giver of life, come and abide in us, and cleanse us from our every impurity, and save our souls, O good one. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mortal, have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mortal, have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mortal, have mercy on us. Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, now and ever and to the ages of ages, amen. O most holy Trinity, have mercy on us, O Lord, cleanse us from our sins. O master, pardon our transgression, O holy one, visit and heal our infinities for thy name sake. Lord, have mercy, Lord, have mercy, Lord, have mercy. Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, now and ever and to the ages of ages, amen. Our Father, who art in heavens, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as in heaven. Give us the rebirth, and forgive our debts, as we forgive our debtors, and let us not in temptation, but deliver us from the evil one. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, of the Father, and of the Son, of the Holy Spirit, now and ever and to the ages of ages, amen. Let us pray to the Lord, Lord, have mercy. O God, that breathes in all flesh, who has trampled on death and overthrown the evil, and given life to thy world, do thou, the same Lord, give rest to the soul of thy departed servant, who perish in the floodings in Texas, in a place of brightness, a place of refreshment, a place of repose, where all sinners, sinners, or have led away, pardon every transgression which they have committed, whether by word or deed or thought. For thou art a good God, and love as mankind, because there is no person who lives yet and yet not does not sin. For thou only art without sin, thy righteousness to all eternity, and thy word is truth. For thou art the resurrection, the life and repose of thy servants, who perish in the floodings in Texas, who are fallen asleep, O Christ our God, and unto thee with thy glory, together with thy Father, who is from everlasting, and thine all holy good and life and spirit, now and ever and to the ages of ages, amen. Let us pray to the Lord, Lord, have mercy. O Lord Jesus Christ, the true and waving light, thou who hast said, where two or three are gathered together in my name, there I am in the midst of them. Thou who didst make wise the lovely fishermen, and by the descent of the Holy Spirit didst render them god beaming and heroes of thy divine gospel. Do thou thyself, O most merciful master, vouches, vouches us to receive the thanksgiving which we humbly offer unto it this day, and send down thy heavenly grace upon all here assembled, yet do thou bless and sanctify us all. Cause thy light, which ever shines, to illumines the hearts of those who have gathered here according to thy holy will. For thou didst sanctify the sanctuary of thine apostle, breathing upon them the spirit of conquer and godly counsel, that we likewise bearing on one another's burdens, may fulfill thy law, and in brother law be incre- thy law, and in brother love be increased, in knowledge, and in every good work. Bestow upon us, we beseech thee, the spirit of wisdom and of understanding, opens eyes of our hearts, that we may walk according to thy divine will, and graciously hearken unto our supplication, that with one voice and one heart we may glorify in him thine all holy and most blessed name, unto the ages of ages, amen. Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, now, and ever, and to the ages of ages. May our Lord Jesus Christ, who is blessing everything, bless all here present, bless the city of Lubbock and its people and its representative, for being good and love as mankind, always, now, and ever, and to the ages of ages, amen.
Thank you so much. Shared prayer, now let us join together to honor our American and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Father, for reminding us, and we'll begin here just, because people are concerned about our neighbors, our fellow citizens, and all that they've gone through down in central Texas, you know, Texas stands together, and our city is ready to assist those areas that have been devastated, property damages, loss of life, injury, in any way that we can. We've been in conversation with many people down there, and are prepared to send help from our city to them, as they request it, as they need it, as they've sent help to us when we've needed it in the past. Encourage all Lubbock citizens to not only pray for those people, but to find a way to contribute, either through some agency like the American Red Cross Salvation Army or others, who are working very hard to assist those people now who are without homes, without food. So we remember them. We are bound together as fellow citizens and neighbors in love and concern, so let's just remember them. All right. We'll now call the meeting to order, and we'll take up citizen comments. According to our city council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the Lubbock City Council on any matter posted on our agenda, may sign up and provide us with their name, and whatever it is they want to speak on, the item they want to speak on, no later than 2:00 PM on the day of the meeting. So please remember, when you come forward, to give us your name, and you'll have three minutes to make your statement. There will be a bell rung when you have 30 seconds left, and a final bell rung when you need to wrap up your comments. We have two people today wanting to make comments. Jessica Saxton, Jessica, if you would come forward.
Thank you so much. My name is Jessica Saxton. I'm a civil rights advocate and litigator from Washington DC. I need to provide notice to the council today, this is in accordance with USCS Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States Supreme Court is, the United States of America, is the overarching requirements that every state must follow. I don't think anyone would disagree with that. States cannot enact their own alternative legislation in substitution for the guarantees of the Constitution. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than our Constitution. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 states that no person should be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment by a grand jury. However, the state of Texas unfortunately has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits prosecuting attorneys and police officers to charge by way of information as opposed to indictment. That is unconstitutional. An emolument violation is when you pay a public official to commit a crime. There are two areas in the Constitution that enforces this. The first one is Article 1, Section 10, that states, no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contract. Police officers, prosecutors, and judges are all under contract, a contract to perform based upon the oath or affirmation that they took. The contract perimeters are defined within the Constitution of the United States. So when the state enacts its own laws that directs their agents to obey or disobey the Constitution of the United States, that would be a violation of Article 1, Section 10. The second one is the 14th Amendment, where you'll find the reinforcement of this issue. It states, no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunity of United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of United States citizens are at a minimum those that are enumerated in the Bill of Rights and the first 10 amendments. The state of Texas unfortunately has enacted a law in its inferior Constitution that is permitting public officials, law enforcement, whom you pay, to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in Texas illegally and unconstitutionally. Tanawa Downing is preparing to litigate this issue at the United States Supreme Court on behalf of more than 700,000 people currently imprisoned here in America unconstitutionally. I'm here today to provide you notice that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, that criminal sanctions can come from that. Officials must be made aware that paying people to disobey the law, the United States Constitution, is an emolument violation, it is illegal, and it is unconstitutional. I'm asking you honorable individuals to please take a look at Clause 1, Amendment 5, confirm what I'm saying to be true, and direct your public officials to act in a lawful constitutional manner consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States. I do have something that I'd like to put on the record, please.
Tanawa Downing? Did I say that right, Mr. Downing? Tanawa? Tanawa? All right, and you're speaking to Agenda Item 6.1?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll explain the reason why now.
Okay, please, please do, because it wasn't apparent to us.
Thank you so much, thank you. So my name's Tanawa Downing, and I'm the civil rights litigator that Ms. Saxton was just referring to. The reason why we're here is this is the 16th stop of 55 that we're doing over the next 40 days to try to bring awareness to this issue, so we can get it addressed. You guys pay for the police, the police services, the county commissioners, they pay for the jail and the sheriff. If the police are choosing to rely upon an inferior state statute that is in violation of the Constitution, then they go out and do that work, then that would mean that you guys are paying for it. So when you have a budget item here, such as 6.1, that's requesting budget for law enforcement to be able to perform their work, we need to let you know that we need to correct their behavior to act in a constitutional manner. Now, Texas has created a law in its inferior Constitution that allows for the prosecuting attorney or the police officers to charge by information, by their discretion. That is not lawful, because you can never, ever, ever use discretion with regard to one's obligations. Obligations must be performed, otherwise you're using your discretion abusively to break the law. And so Texas is not the only state. There's actually 28 states that currently allow for prosecuting attorneys to charge by information or indictment, and I'll let you know that with regard to information, Title 18, subsection 5 by 5, says that information can only be used as a charging instrument for non-impugns crimes, for misdemeanors, not even for felonies. So the fact that the state of Texas has that in its Constitution is actually in violation of federal laws. So the law that applies to criminal conspiracy with regard to public officials, what it says, it says that any person who, having knowledge of any of the wrongs conspired to be done, and who have the power to prevent, or aid in the prevention of the commission's aim, neglects or refuses to do so, may be joined as defense of the action. We're not trying to get anybody into trouble, at all. Don't get us wrong. We're here because we want to provide notice to you guys, and hopefully we can all work together to avoid any further litigation, but once being made aware of this situation, you do have an obligation now to take action to correct this behavior, because the only thing that makes America, America, is the Constitution, and we want to make sure that we get that preserved, because when we don't follow the Constitution, we have a breakdown, fracturing of this nation, and we don't want to see that happen anymore. So I'm going to end it with this, that we have been in communication with Cash Patel, the director of the FBI, as well as also Senator Kennedy, and they do agree that the Constitution is the supreme law of land, and when state judges or county prosecutors fail to follow federal law, they are in violation of the supremacy clause, they are committing a crime, and they are subject to arrest. So I would ask you guys to please discharge the duties of your office, fulfill the obligations and promises that you made to the people of the state of Texas, and let's support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all these foreign and domestic. Thank you so much, God bless.
All right. We'll now take, I have no other citizen comments, so we'll take up Item Number 5.1 on our agenda, the minutes from our June 10th, 2025 regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve Item 5.1? Motion in a second, any discussion, or any changes, or alterations, or? I see none, so all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Hear none? Motion is approved. We'll now take up our consent agenda, and there's not been a request to pull any items today, so I'll entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? I see none, all in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Hear none? All right, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. We'll now take up our regular agenda, and we'll start with Item 7.1, Board Appointments to the Appointments Advisory Board, Building Board of Appeals, Canadian River Municipal Water Authority Board of Directors, Citizens Traffic Commission, Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee, Libraries Board, Lubbock Water Advisory Commission, Model Codes and Construction, Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Board, and the Permit and License Appeal Board. I will now call on the city secretary, Ms. Paz, to provide the briefing on this matter, and the recommendations of the Appointments Advisory Board and Council Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mayor. I will read down the list. For the Appointments Advisory Board, we have Margaret Kelly being recommended for reappointment in a District 5 position, Keith Patrick in a mayor rep position being recommended for reappointment, in Kathleen Burrell's position, a District 5 rep, it's being recommended for Tyler Young to replace her. In a District 1 rep, Ruby Gonzalez is being recommended to be replaced by Margarita Olivares. In a District 2 rep, Karen Mitchell is being recommended to be replaced by Andrea Parker. Mary Gerlach in a District 3 rep position is being recommended to be replaced by Tiffany Robinson. Building Board of Appeals, we have Ricky Lawrence in an electrician position, and Christina Weir in an architect position, both being recommended for reappointment. Canadian River Municipal Water Authority Board of Directors, James Collins being recommended for reappointment. Citizens Traffic Commission, Marion McGuire being recommended for reappointment. Christina Gonzalez being recommended to be replaced by Dylan Edwards, and Jody Slaughter being recommended to be replaced by Gilbert Quintero. Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee, Rodney Shay Benson being recommended to be replaced by Allison Hoffman. Amanda Olivo being recommended to be replaced by Jaclyn Taylor. Libraries Board, Eddie Kirkpatrick in a mayor rep position being recommended to be replaced by Alexander Salter. Lubbock Water Advisory Commission, we have Jay House in a representative of a water organization position, and Theodore Cleveland also in a representative of a water organization position, both being recommended for reappointment. We have Rusty Smith in a citizen position being recommended for reappointment. For Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board, we have Blake Collins in an electrician position, is being recommended to be replaced by Kendall Wood. This would be for a current term and for the term beginning December 1st, as this term was about to expire. For the Park and Recreation Board, being recommended for Morgan Guffey's replacement is Kim Davis. And finally, for the Permit and License Appeal Board, we have Tom Nichols in a law enforcement position, and Gillian Nava in a water industry position, both being recommended for reappointment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Paz. Is there a motion to appoint the individuals as recommended? You have a motion in a second, any discussion? I see none, all in favor of these appointments, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. I hear none, motion is approved unanimously. We'll now take up appointments to the Civic Lubbock Incorporated Board of Directors, and I call on the city secretary again to provide a briefing on this matter, and recommendations of the Appointments Advisory Board and the Council Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mayor. For this one, we have Kristi Cage being recommended for reappointment. For Sammy Prather's position, Alice Lozada is being recommended for that replacement. And then for James Epler's position, there are three recommendations, Jennifer Martinez, Daryl Holland, and Claire Lavelle. And that is my briefing on this one.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to replace James Epler, as he's not eligible for reappointment, with our Subcommittee's recommendation, which is Claire Lavelle, from District 6.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, I'm looking to see, Dr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I know that the mayor made a recommendation on this, as well as the Subcommittee had recommended, and agreed with the Appointments Advisory Board, and I just wanted to state for the record, there was really no difference between the two recommendations, there was no, one that outshone the other, it was simply based on the fact that Ms. Lavelle had been waiting to get on this board, I believe, Courtney, since like 2018, 19?
Yes, she heard.
Many, many, many years. And I think sometimes we get into the habit, myself included, of appointing friends and going out and hunting people down, and we forget those that actually have applied and would like to be on a board, and so I've heard people who've reached out and said, I've sat waiting to get a board appointment for five, six, seven years, and then they lose interest, and we don't want people to lose interest in our city and what we're doing, and so I have now made it a habit for myself, and I know Councilman Harris was in agreement that we should start using our preference lists and actually look for people who are interested and have made those interest notes. So that's why we recommended Ms. Claire.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I'm glad to hear that the council is recognizing how important it is to have individuals that have been on these waiting lists for a very long time. For me, the other thing that is also pressing is that we make sure that we have these folks that are waiting, but also that we are including folks from districts that are not representative of their own, and that we always have folks from a variety of districts, because we have different perspectives, and we need to make sure that we acknowledge that. So I appreciate that we have finally made it a point to include folks that have been waiting and wanting to serve, and we appreciate them for their interest.
All right, I'll just say that my, and I have nothing against Ms. Lavelle, and I appreciate the fact that she has applied for it. My concern is that this board needs to have the kind of expertise I think Mr. Holland brings to it, as the manager of the Cactus Theater, who has done an incredible job of bringing entertainment and knows how to manage those events, and I think that's the kind of expertise that is specifically needed on this board, and so it's, I don't actually know Ms. Lavelle, I have nothing against her, and I appreciate her application, but I just thought that he brought a lot more to this position, and what this board actually does, and is charged with doing, his expertise in that area is important for the board, so that's why I've supported him as the nominee for that position, and I will be voting for him. Dr. Wilson.
And I apologize, I'm going to have to fix my motion just a little bit, because the city secretary called me out and said I missed the other two, and so as part of that motion as to fix it, and you can tell me, city attorney, how you want me to do that, I also need to, including the Civic Lubbock Board, mention Ms. Kristi Cage, who is eligible for reappointment, we would like to reappoint her as well, and Mr. Sammy, or Sammy Prather is, was not eligible for reappointment, and the Subcommittee had recommended Alice Lozada from District 1.
You, Dr. Wilson, you can either do it through amending your current motion, as long as you have a second, or they can be two different motions, move through on this one, and then just do another motion for the other two, however you'd like to do it, Dr. Wilson.
I suppose we can just amend it, if anybody's in agreement with that.
So I believe it was seconded by Councilman Rose, and so do you agree with the amendment?
Just to be clear, the amendment, the amended motion is to approve the two reappointment, well, the one reappointment, Ms. Lozada and Ms. Lavelle, is that right?
Yes.
Well, there's three people, correct?
Yes. The reappointment, Ms. Lozada.
I got you, yes, that is the, that is the motion that's currently been made and been seconded.
All right, any further discussion on the amended motion? I see none, so all in favor of the amended motion, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Nay. Who were the nays, us two, just two nays, all right. So that motion, amended motion passes. We'll now take up item 7.2, to consider appointments to the Electric Utility Board of Directors, and I will call on the City Secretary to provide the briefing on this matter and recommendations of the Appointments Advisory Board and the Council Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mayor, and this recommendation actually comes to you directly from the Electric Utility Board. They are recommending Mike Stevens to replace Louis Harville, who has resigned from the board.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a second? All right, is there any discussion? Again, I will state my objection to this particular nominee for the board, Mr. Stevens, and nothing personal against Mr. Stevens, I know him pretty well, and he's a good man. But Mr. Stevens makes his living working for political people who run for positions. Some of us up here on the dais, working for us or against us, and he earns his living from that. I think that calls into question the independence of someone's judgment in a situation like this, on a very important board, where I think we need that real independence. So in the interest of transparency and accountability, I think he's not a good choice for this particular board. But again, I want to make clear that my opposition to him is nothing personal against him. Any further discussion, Mayor Potem?
My take is a little bit different, having, you know, sometimes our council is not present. And for me, it's important that whoever serves, whoever we agree on, is going to be attending council meetings, because it has certainly not been reflected from our council.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of appointing Mike Stevens to the Electric Utility Board, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Nay, and that motion passes unanimously, I mean, six to one, sorry. All right, we'll now take up item 7.3 and conduct a public hearing regarding the land use assumptions and capital improvements plans associated with the 2025 impact fee restudy. As a reminder, the purpose of public hearing is to hear from members of the public regarding a particular issue, in this case, the committee's report. And I'm gonna call on the City Engineer, John Turpin, to provide a summary of the subject of this public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Before I get started, I would like to recognize our Capital Improvements Advisory Committee members that are here, we have Clay Inger, Thomas Payne, and then Chris Berry is also in the crowd, who is our current Chair. So with that, before I get started on my slide presentation, it has many updates that y'all asked for, y'all had a lot of questions that we didn't have answers to last time, so I will get to those, but a lot of those aren't specifically for this public hearing today. And so for this public hearing today, what this is all about is our impact fee report, which basically, what we need to talk about today is land use assumptions and our capital improvements plan, and then finally, the SEAC recommendation, which is the next item that y'all will take action on, which is our resolution. So this is not setting any rates today. That's what I want to, everybody in our crowd here, that we have here, our public, this does not set rates, what we are looking at specifically is land use assumptions and our capital improvements plan from the impact fee study. And hopefully, I can really make this clear today on how everything goes. So with that, I'll start my presentation. So the first piece of the puzzle here was, we had to update all of our annexation areas. This shows our new map. Specific areas that had quite a bit of annexation were A, F, E, and there were some in D, and as well as some in C, that were updated from that 2020 plan. So this just captures and adds the new annexed areas to this map. So as far as our impact fee components, our land use assumptions, really what goes into this, I'm gonna break this down and make it even more simplified than this slide shows. So really, what we're looking at is residential and non-residential use. It says employment up there, but it's truly residential, non-residential use. In residential, you have single-family, and you have multifamily. With non-residential, you've got three, you've got basic, service, and retail. So retail is pretty self-explanatory, service is like your offices, your schools, and then finally, your basic is industrial and parks. And each one of those, as you move up, has more traffic demand. So when you're talking basic service and retail. So moving more into the land use assumptions, a big part of this is that growth rate that we assumed. So on the first study, we had a 2.5% growth rate. Really looking at our life as a city, and really looking at what we've done over the many years, and having discussions with our Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, it was determined that a 2.2% growth rate was more appropriate. And so what I want y'all to hear here is that this 2.2% growth rate really affects the entirety of this plan, from the land use assumptions to the capital improvements plan, because that's the assumption of how much are we gonna gain in each individual area for single-family dwellings, for our apartment complexes, for your individual retail, industrial, et cetera. And so it affects, that's the biggest part of this that it affects, and really, on both parts of this plan, we look specifically at a 10-year window. And that's what this impact fee study really does, it looks at a 10-year window, and then has to assume how many roads are we gonna have to build within that 10-year, and looks at specifically the growth. And so this, this is a rehash of the map of y'all seen previously. It does show each individual area, I'm not gonna go over these areas, but I will get a little bit more in-depth on the next slide, because I really want y'all to understand what we're talking about when we do all these calculations. And so on the next slide, we've got the, so we'll just go, for instance, with the first line, Area A, we have that 6,711, so how do you, how do you reach that? That is specifically Area A times your transportation demand factor. And so what is that transportation demand factor? Okay, that transportation demand factor is vehicle miles per unit. So if we say we're gonna have 6,711 houses, that's your unit. You multiply that by your transportation demand factor, that's basically the amount of cars that's assumed within your PM peak, so this is assumed at 4 to 6 PM. You multiply that, and that gets your vehicle miles for single-family residential in Area A. The next one is the same calculation of multifamily, but this transportation man factor, because it's per unit for an apartment complex, where a multifamily is lower, it's assumed lower, because you won't have as many trips coming from it. Does that make sense? And so the, the one that gets a little bit more convoluted, but it's really not, it's just broken down by square footage. And so every one of your non-residential units are by the thousand square feet. That is the unit. And so when you look at the 143,000, you divide that by 1,000, you come up with 143, and then you multiply by that transportation demand factor to get into vehicle miles. And why is this important? So if I come all the way down to the end, you do all those calculations, you get, let's say for Area A, 48,807, for the vehicle miles within Area A. That becomes your denominator within your equation of the impact fee. Any questions on that? Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, I'm sure there will be questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Collins.
So John, the TDF that's being utilized in this study, or the updated study, is the TDF changed from the original study?
Yes, they have, sir, it's now the 11th Edition Manual of the Love-Met, and I'm sorry, I might have to ask, I know you don't want any, but I do not remember what the Love-Met stands for.
Yeah, so since the last go around, the 11th Edition of the Transportation Engineers' Manual, ITE Trip Generation Manual, has been updated, so it's new rates for all these uses that we're now accounting for.
Do you know off the top of your head what the TDF was when impact fees were originated?
I do not have the previous versions, no.
I guess I'm, I'm asking the question is, why would we assume, I'm assuming it went up, and I'm asking that a question, why would we assume that those miles generated would have changed in a single-family home?
Councilman Collins, I can speak to that specifically, because I did look at, now I don't remember what the current are, but we could definitely get that to y'all. So basically, in some instances, it did go up, and other instances, it actually went down. As they gather data, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they're using the technology we have today, these mobile phones that are sitting with you, they're looking, they're seeing specifically what travel is happening to each one of these areas, and it gets updated periodically. And so we're on the 11th Edition today, we were previously on the 10th Edition. And so some did go up, but some went down. So retail specifically, as you get up to those higher square footages, those went down substantially for the higher square footage, because it's assumed you're gonna go there, and you're gonna spend time, and you're gonna utilize their infrastructure to travel between, let's say, Canyon West, where you would go to like a Costco, and then you might go over to a Cabela's, or any number of those stores, and stay within that area. So you're not actually making a traffic impact on our roadway at that point. And so there's several updates, yes, sir.
Well, for the five categories that you're showing, showing us on this slide, could you provide those numbers to us in the next few days?
Yes, sir, we can, yes, sir.
Mr. Rose.
Go back one, John.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I'm missing something, so the, the TDF factor on multifamily is, is lower than a single-family home? How are they coming up with that? Can you explain that to me?
I think it's specifically because multifamily assumes a lot of apartment complexes, and when you get into apartment, there are typically smaller dwellings, and so it's assumed that there's less people there within those dwellings.
Okay.
But there would be many more units.
It would be per unit?
Yes.
Not, okay.
Yes.
So this vehicle miles number over on the far right, under A, 48,807, that is derived by multiplying column A, 6,711, by 2.82, the second column, 3,054 by 1.17, all the way across, and that's how, and then in the basic service and retail, you divide those by 1,000, and multiply that by that figure, and that, I'm not...
And then you sum all those numbers.
And Mr. Collins and I, neither one want to do math up here, but I'm gonna assume that number is, is the result, that's how you get that.
Yes, sir, yeah, and you sum all those numbers together, and that gives you your vehicle miles per area.
Okay, and so it's formula-based, and the statistic that you rely on, the TDF, comes from a manual that is produced by...
Yes, the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Okay, and everybody who's, anybody who's doing this kind of assessment uses that same manual?
This is what's laid out in, in our local government code, that we have to do.
All right.
It's very standardized.
All right, any other questions at this point? Okay, proceed.
So this next slide, it looks daunting, but really, I'm gonna take this a piece at a time, so if we start with, let's say, the first row, or the first line that goes across, the total capacity planned cost, this is what I'm gonna refer to as the universe of projects. So if you took our entire city, or in this case, the entire area, so Area A, and we didn't assume a 10-year window, we just assumed that we wanted it all built out, that is that cost, okay? Now, if you go to the recoverable cost of total roadway capacity plan, this is where we get into that 10-year window. So that 128,522,427 on Area A, that would be your 10-year window. That's what we need to build within the next 10 years, that is the cost. And then you're allowed to add in your financing, because obviously, being a city, we're not gonna have 128 million to just come up with to, so we're gonna have to finance that. So you're allowed to add it in your financing, but then Chapter 395 actually requires us to cut that number by 50%. When we do that, it is automatically assumed that we are going to take on 50% of that. Now, the piece that we are talking about that could potentially affect the rates in the future is that other 50%. So y'all are allowed to set the percentage therein. And so that's really what I want to hit home here, is that that 50% is already cut out. The city's taken on 50% of that, and then the other percentage is up to y'all's determination. So if I keep going down, and this is, so we get down to that 83,695,467, and you divide that by our vehicle miles, now you have that max assessable fee. That's how you get to that, so if you take that, it comes down to that 17,14 in the case of Area A, and in the case of, I'm showing you the green one, which is the single-family residential, if you multiply that by that transportation demand factor for a single-family residence at 2.82, that will give you, if you were at the max fee, that would give you 4,833 as the max fee for Area A. Does that make sense? And each one of these is done the exact same way. So I really want to just make sure that everybody's following me on this. I don't think, I don't think we did a good job of really telling y'all how this worked, but I really want to make sure that I'm hitting this home this time. Okay, any, no questions?
So, yeah, hang on, just one minute there. So 2025 max assessable impact fee per service unit, not per service area, it's per service unit. What's the service unit?
Where are you looking at, sir?
The blue.
Oh, the service, the service unit is the vehicle miles.
Okay, so it's the, that's the 83 million divided by the 48,000?
Yes, and that was the previous where we said the denominator.
Okay.
So if I back it up just one slide and show you Area A, where we did those calculations to, for all the assumptions of the growth in this area, that's how many vehicle miles were produced.
Okay, so go back to the...
Yes, sir.
So then, I don't want to be dense here, but what's the difference between the max assessable impact fee per service unit and max fee per single-family dwelling?
That's, that's the one where you have to now take that transportation demand factor again.
Okay.
And multiply...
All right, I got you.
So the TDF, and I'll show it to you on the next slide, the TDF for a single-family house.
You go back in and you backfill some of those numbers now?
Yes, you go back to that same transportation demand factor, yes, sir.
Do you work off an Excel sheet, or what do you do to get all this?
All these are, yes, all of these are worked off Excel spreadsheets, yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. Keep going.
So we showed many of these comparison slides last time, and really, what I want to hit home is the council has options to be anywhere in between. We do still show our C, our Capital Improvements Advisory Committee's recommendation on this slide, as well as you can see in the group, so that would be the yellow bar for single-family. The green bar is the max fee, that's as high as we could possibly go. The kind of off-color blue, that it says Lubbock 2025, current and SEAC average. So what we did there, we just wanted to throw an option at y'all and see what your thoughts were, where we took and averaged between our current rate and what the SEAC's recommendation was. And that, that's what was brought to you, and you'll see on many of these slides, that kind of brings us more into the middle of the pack on these comparison slides, as opposed to on some of them, we're up on the higher end of the threshold. And then lastly, the, the kind of darker blue is our current rate for single-family. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at Area F being greater than Area A in its greatest number.
Yes, sir.
And you may have covered this already, but can you, for my sake, cover that again? Why is, why is a single-family home different in one part of town than the other?
Yes, sir, so Area F, what I want to... So area F, what I want to explain about area F is when we really looked at the numbers and the assumption of growth and what we saw for permits coming out of each area. Area, I believe it's A and E, which are the, the two highest right now, showed a lot more permits, a lot more growth than area F has recently. And so area F has less growth, but it still has a big demand for your capital improvements projects. And so that's why area F is actually your highest impact fee currently. And, and I do want to say, all the comparison slides that we're showing y'all are off of area F, which is the highest impact fee. Our lowest would be about 40% of area F.
To answer your question, Mister Collins? Have you got another question? Are you good?
Okay.
Okay, well, uh, my question again is, when you have down there under the yellow one, Lubbock 2025, 50%, okay, recommendation, that's 50% of the 50%.
It is 50% of the 50%.
Because we are thinking 25% is what we've got.
It is 25% of the total project cost because we are on the hook for 50%.
This is not a recommendation at this point of a 50% rate.
50% of the 50%.
Thank you very much, alright.
I know that's confusing to a lot of people and really got to hit that home that this is, it's 25% of the total project cost, but it is 50% of the max that we're allowed to charge.
The max, yes, the part we have to cover, okay.
So this just, again, it's, it's going down through each one of these comparison slides. I won't belabor, belabor the process unless y'all want to really look at each individual one. Uh, you can see it slightly lowers by doing the average, but the CAC recommendation is, everything is still there from the previous slides. All of the stuff or the comparison slides on the right, take into account where people have water and wastewater impact fees on top of this. And we do not, ours are currently set at zero, as y'all know. I will say, other cities like Amarillo, I was actually speaking with Mister Barry prior to coming in here and he actually told me that he had to do a traffic impact analysis. And then he was charged upon, or he had to actually build a portion of their road. So although they don't have an impact fee, they do have an avenue to get thoroughfares built. So this is going, I know Councilman Collins, you, you talked about the coffee shop last time. I do have a slide later on that addresses specifically the coffee shop without the seating. It is much lower in this new study than it had been previously. So I'll, I'll continue unless y'all have more questions.
Please proceed.
Yes, sir. So 5,000 square foot office building, as you can see, the, we're getting closer to the middle on many of these. Fifteen thousand square foot retail. And then, uh, Councilman Gleschin, I tried to address, uh, this would be a, a regular kind of united supermarket. I do have a slide that actually addresses, um, sorry, the, the larger of the two. I can't, I can't remember what it's called off the top of my head, but I know I also have one that addresses like if an HEB came in because they're much larger than all of those, so. So with that, impact fee policies and decisions. Our Capital Improvements Advisory Committee recommendations. They had recommended, again, to collect 50% of the 50%, so 25% of the total project. This is the same methodology as the previous ordinance. Service areas G and H, they wanted to maintain a zero impact fee in those areas. They also wanted to have a six-month grace period. I did not have this previously and, and Chris reminded me of this, for all building permits charged at the current rate. So they would like to see that. I do want to, I, I'll have a, a slide after this where I can talk about many of the ordinances that I looked at and studied, where there are a lot of options that y'all could choose in regards to currently plotted properties. So, uh, CAC also wanted to implement a formal onboarding process for our new Capital Improvement Advisory Committee members. And then, uh, finally, uh, they wanted council to support specifically bond projects with our impact fees when at all possible. And they, they want a, a semi-annual update of our, of our use. And just as a reminder, council can. Thank you. Specifically, I'm going to, I won't go over the more simplistic ones. I will say Midland, Chris made me aware that they actually have an adjacent road that has to be built in addition to collecting impact fees. I did not know that. Odessa, they have a, a rate structure that is actually, they're slightly higher on commercial. So their non-residential is higher and it also varies per area. So they have set percentages depending on which area you're in. Waco is a flat rate, 67% on, on both of their, and these are all based off the mask, max fees for each one of these. Denton ranges anywhere from 15 to 32% for single-family residential, dependent upon what area you're in. So they're actually changing their percentages on each area. And same thing with their, uh, non-residential, but you can see that their non-residential is about half of their single-family residential. So, uh, let's see, and then the last one that I really want to hit home on is McKinney. And they are an example of where they not only change per service area, but on their commercial, they have set specific rates for specific uses. So if they wanted to per se, say, they want a grocery store set lower, they did that. I couldn't, I couldn't come up with a percentage for any of their commercial, so. Because it, it just ranged all over the place and the areas for, they had a lot of areas that were zero impact fee for residential and then they had everything in, in between for other areas, so. And then finally, uh, this, this shows the single-family residential slide again. It does, uh, point out the, the new potential option of the average between the CAC recommendation and, uh, the current, uh, and shows the difference there, uh, on that green slide all, all the way to the end from what they are currently and that it's just more options. I want to make sure y'all, just trying to get y'all thinking about what y'all might want to do.
Mister Harris?
Yes, uh, these fees were set, what, back in 2018, part of the 2040 plan?
Uh, the, the study started in 2018 and then it was adopted in 2020.
Okay, are, is there a freeze on the impact fees right now?
A freeze on.
I mean, the fees on, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Is there a freeze on the dispersment of the impact fees?
No, sir.
No, okay, thank you.
I think this question was, is there a freeze, a current freeze on the dispersment or the use of the impact fees? Mister Atkinson?
No, no, sir, there's no freeze and we've recently used them over on East 19th for that project on that concrete roadway, transferred to South Quaker.
Yes, yes.
Upland Avenue, 66 to 82nd, two different service areas participate in that one as well. So there, there's no freeze and there's a couple of potential projects pending right now.
And addressing what Jared just brought up, we, we have had a meeting about 114th Street and it looks like we are going to be able to push forward with the developers agreement for that project to get it from Upland to Alcove. So we're, we're currently in the throes of trying to work through all the paperwork to get that on council. So this is very busy, but it shows basically every comparison that we talked about and it has a, a few additional at the end that specifically address the larger united supermarkets and then finally the HEB at the end. And it shows at our current rates, the CAC recommendation is the second down of those, those tables. And then lastly, it would be the average between the CAC recommendation and the, uh, current rates.
Mayor Potem?
Could you, just for the sake of anybody watching, I know that you have the, the service areas divided by A through H, but is there a way that you could tell the public, the service area, the districts?
I don't think they're quite split up, split up by district, but they're certainly, um, close. So if I'm, I'm just back up to our, our map where it shows all the land use assumptions, but, uh, you have area C and D that are certainly within districts one and two. H, which, H and G, which is approximately probably three, maybe a little bit of, of four. You have, uh, area E, which I think is almost all four. And then F, uh, I believe is, uh, Councilman or Councilwoman Jennifer Wilson, five. And then A is really six.
And B would be a combination of six and one?
Yes, that is correct, yes, ma'am. Yeah, there, there's definitely some overlap, but in general, generally it's, it's close.
Thank you.
So a, a good question would be, how are those service areas determined?
Basically, it's, uh, a little more art than science, but it's, it's held to a six-mile trip length.
And would you go back to the, the frame that had the comparison of Lubbock's rates to other cities? Right there, yes?
Yes, sir.
So, um, a single-family house, it looks like the proposed rates sort of in there, in between some of these other cities. Odessa on the one hand, or, or Waco, even some of these places that have higher rates than us actually collect or assess less. I mean, how does that work? When people are looking at that, they're like, this one, we're kind of in the medium. The one before, I think we're closer to the high end, uh, I think you could go back one.
Which one?
Uh, just go back one more, yeah, a couple, no, sorry. Alright, not that one. Alright, there, the coffee shop, your idea of your coffee shop.
Yes, sir.
Pretty high, we're at the far end, the high end on that.
We are closer to the higher end, yes, sir.
So what you're saying is, we could look at the different uses and set them. If we saw this, say, well, that's problematic, someone wants to open a coffee shop and they're going to be paying one of the highest rates in the state, even though we only collect 25% or half of the 50%. We could work with those figures as well.
Absolutely. You can, you can change the rate per use as long as you stay within that max fee.
Mayor Potem?
I'm so sorry.
Okay, any other questions? Mister Collins?
So you, you just said that we could, we could amend the rate per use.
Yes, yes, sir.
And so, I mean, and it, and it doesn't become arbitrary, of course, because I guess we're going to have to do it across the board, but, you know. And, and the reason that this coffee shop came, came to the forefront, of course, again, we're, you know, proposed at, at possibly the highest in, in this group of cities in the state. And, and this is more than likely a, a small business owner, whether it's a coffee shop or a small restaurant or whatever, and, and seems to be very discouraging to our, our small business, which is the backbone of our, the city of Lubbock. I mean, we are small business, this is what, and, and I think I can speak for all seven of us when I say we are small business. And this seems to be, you know, a discouraging of that. So, so you can go through and take, I mean, and this is quite an exercise if we were to take it up, but if we were to take up and say.
It definitely could be, sir, yes.
You can.
But you can, yes.
But you can.
McKinney is the specific example where they've done that on almost every commercial use.
What's, our, what's the timeline or what's the end date for the assessments that's being done from the 2020 option?
So our, our, our goal today for schedule-wise, we already have the public hearing set up for the rates on the 22nd, and then we would need to have two council readings of the ordinance in probably, uh, early to mid-October. We can't wait until that last.
August.
Or August, 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 sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, thank you. Early, early August is approximately when we would need to have that done because there is a 10-day effective window. And with the new state law changes that have come into effect, it could require us to go through that audit process or it would invalidate our current study.
Say that again, please?
So there's a 10-day window after, if you all took action on that second read, there's a 10-day window to where it becomes effective, I believe. And Matt, Matt could correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what my understanding is and that 10-day window is when they truly become effective. And if we get into that September timeframe, the new law would apply to us.
Well.
Sorry.
Probably those details I could talk about in executive session, but to belts and suspenders, what we would like to do is have this in effect prior to September 1st of 2025.
And so another question I have as we go through this, we could have a, we could have a rate for residential and we could have a rate for commercial that, that is, is 1%, 2%, 0%?
Correct, yes, sir. It's at y'all's discretion to set it however you, you view it. And, and it can also be not only set per usage, but set per area.
Okay, Mister Rose?
Sorry, John, as the mayor put it, it feels a little dense over here, I apologize. But, um, the, the number on this coffee shop, on, on the very left, the Lubbock 2025, 50%, no indoor seating, the 614, can you explain that to me? What?
Sorry, I'm.
Right next to the zero at Amarillo.
The 600. Oh, okay, uh, yes, sir, uh.
The 614 number.
Yeah, that's, that's our current rate. So if I, if, I'm going to go take you back to where I did those, those comparisons.
Uh-huh.
And these, it's a little small for me to see, but you can see, if we look at, uh, your current, your current rates of where it is today, on the old ITE manual, this is where I was, I was telling y'all that some of these things have changed, specifically coffee shops, they separated out no-seating coffee shops from seating coffee shops. So seated coffee shops are assumed by the square footage. Okay?
Okay.
And on the old ITE manual, all you had was square footage, it didn't matter whether you had seating or not. So we were charging the, the no-seating coffee shop probably arbitrarily high by the old ITE manual, but it's all set by the ITE manual. So the, the new manual actually sets out drive-through lanes for a non-seated coffee shop. So all we have to know is the number of drive-through lanes, it tells us the, how much traffic's coming through there. And there's a, a large pass-by rate and you can see, look at the difference between the numbers that were given above for that same coffee shop and given below for the new no-seating. It is substantially lower for those no-seating coffee shops because it is assumed you're going somewhere else, you're just passing through and you're going to another place of business. For Starbucks, you can have a lot of people that go there to study, go to meet, to talk, so it's assumed that they're actually, potentially some of those are a destination stop when you have seating. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Dr. Wilson?
Will you turn me? So I think I'm super confused by any of that, John. I mean, and I'm just saying this out loud because my brain cells are trying to wrap around that. So you're telling me that one coffee shop that has people sitting in the chair versus one that has them driving through is a different amount? one that has them driving through is a different amount, although the same car, whether they're driving to the drive-thru, drive-through in the same car parking in the parking lot, that's the same amount of traffic to me, whether they're driving through, and they keep going, or they park it for a little bit, and then they leave? Isn't that the same amount of cars?
It's, it's their final trip. And so what, what's happening is, although they're coming through the coffee shop on those ones that have no seating, their final trip is another destination. So it's the total mileage.
But yet, we're assessing that business for them maybe going somewhere else, that that's not a final destination, like we're assessing a different number. So one that-
It's, it's pass-by rate, ma'am.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say. So, but the, because we are assessing impact fees for roadways because, because of traffic, increased traffic because of businesses. But yeah, we're charging them different, even though the actual amount of cars that drive through the business are the same.
They're, they are being charged differently, because your final destination is probably either your workspace or your house.
But the amount of cars that go through the business are the same. Because whether you just drive to the parking lot and go around, or you drive and then you leave, it's the same. You see what I'm saying? Like, the actual traffic for that business, whether you sit down or you don't sit down, is the same.
You, you are correct that the traffic coming in and out, but what, what the difference is, is are people going there and choosing that as their destination stop? So are they going there, sitting down, having a cup of coffee, staying there for an hour, and then picking up and going somewhere else?
But how does that change the impact on the road? That's, I think that's what I'm trying to get at. That makes no sense to me.
Those are great questions, and I, I'm going to go with your concept, it's same number of cars that are hitting the road. Their, their theory, and we don't ultimately have to accept it, but the theory behind the way the ITE is doing that, the one that doesn't have seating, part of the cost is being assigned to a different entity-
Yes.
-to wherever else they're going, where they're presuming that if you've got seating, you're going to be there doing whatever you're studying. That was the endpoint of the trip. So they're assigning more of that total cost to the one with seating than they are to the one without seating.
That just seems nonsense.
And that's absolutely something that these could be collapsed back into a, to a single deal. It's, it is no more or no less cars, I totally agree with that. It's who's paying for which piece of that.
Thank you, Jared.
Mr. Collins?
Couple other, walk me through a, a simple scenario. A developer builds a strip center that's vacant. Does he pay an impact fee?
Yes, sir.
Five units vacant.
It, as soon as they pull their building permit, they, they receive an impact fee, yes, sir.
And then, we start to fill that, and so we pay an impact fee, again, my five-unit strip center example, we pay five more impact fees?
There, there is an assumed number, and, and there's assumed usages against that initial impact fee. So if they choose to put a facility in there, let's say they choose to put a restaurant with a drive-through in there, and it raises that number, there could be an added impact fee above and beyond what the initial was, because of the choo, the choices of use of the facility. So yes, there is a potential for what you're talking about.
Okay, so let's, let's stick with that building and, and see that we have some turnover in that building, and now we're going to do a reno. Do we, do we have another impact fee for the renovation?
No, sir.
No.
Not, the only way you receive an impact fee potentially is if you completely tear down the building. So if it's just a renovation on our current ordinance, there is no impact fee.
So a renovation, and, and take that out, any, any location in the city, if there's a renovation, we've got a office building that changed into a church, no impact fee?
No impact fee. That's in our current ordinance, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Wilson, you want to try one more time with that?
So following up on Tim's question, so if a business goes into one of those corner slots in a shopping strip, and then leaves, they didn't have to pay an impact fee, because the, the builder of the strip mall already paid it, but now somebody's going to come in through a reno and actually put a drive-through window in, are you going to charge that business an impact fee?
At the beginning, what's assumed is a shell building, so we don't know what their usage is, and so we just charge for the shell retail center. And there are usages within that, so if it jumps beyond those usages, that's when we have to look at, is there a potential that we need to charge an added impact fee for what they've done?
So it could be the third or fourth business in that space, but if they changed it and increased the pass-through, they would have to pay a new impact fee?
Potentially, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the key is, this is all on new construction.
This is all 100% on new construction, yes, sir.
Things that are new. Well, so many assumptions go into this, and that's, that's the difficult thing. I, I don't know what everybody else is feeling here, but I'm, I'm feeling the difficulty we have of even, you know, trying to understand how the assessment works, yet we're being asked to vote on something, to say that it's, it's good, and, but I, I look at some of these things, and I think, well, the assumptions that are underlying it, someone else has made those assumptions, but I don't know if they're all that clear to me, or how everybody else feels about it. Let me just ask, and knowing that other cities have, you know, don't have a uniform rate, they have differing rates, and I don't know what this, and I don't want to detract from the work that this group has done, but I'm, I'm assuming they looked at those other alternatives of having different rates for this, different districts or different uses. But what we're being presented with is just one uniform rate across the board. And so I guess my last question is, given all my questions, if we decide not to adopt this in order to study it a little bit more, when would we be able, once we figure out what we really want to do, when could we come back and do this again? Do we have to wait another five years? Can this be done on a yearly basis? What's the timetable we would have to be working off of?
I, I think it would be at y'all's discretion, because we, we did do the study, which is required by the state law at the five-year. So if y'all chose not to implement or change it, I think we would be on the hook for another five years before we, unless y'all wanted to do something earlier.
Is that how you understand it, Mr. Atkinson?
I think what John said is correct. I mean, be sure I understand your question, Mayor.
There's just so much information, you know, presented to us-
Sure, absolutely.
-trying to get our heads around it and having to make a decision. You know, that's just, if we choose not to go with the recommendation, we could go with just leaving it as it is. Well, I guess that is kind of, this, the recommendation is to leave it as it is, other than the new factors, is that right?
Other, other than the higher max-
The higher max.
The higher max.
Yes, okay.
So that would be the recommendation at the-
Okay.
Yes.
So we could leave it as it is, or adopt this, or we could do away with them altogether while we try to figure out what we might really want to do, and could we come back within a year and do that again? Come back and reinstate them if we found a better way to do this?
Yes, yes, I, I do think that's an option. If I might offer something, a couple, a couple ideas, a couple thoughts. The real action today is to do the public hearing, and I, I think we're going to get a lot of good stuff that will come out of that. No rates are set, no, we proposed this, but we'll go there, we'll go, none, none of that will be today, that's what would happen in August. John, go to one of them where you put that-
But August isn't that far away.
Correct, it's not, trust me. Go, go to one of your charts that have those smoothed-out averages. And counsel, this, this presentation with all this will be in y'all's inbox by the end of the, of the day. Keep, the one's got the bar chart, John. Okay, thank you. And I, I struggle with, with colors that are similar. The dark blue is where you stand today. The yellow is where the recommendation came into you. In between those two, and you can look at the left or the right chart, it really doesn't, doesn't change. The odd color of blue, whatever that is, that's got the big text, Lubbock 2025, current and CAC averaged. That's where John's just, just as a point of illustration, if you took where you stand today, where strictly the mathematics take you tomorrow, that's where you would land. So it's just, it's a point for discussion that we would continue between now and the next hearing at the, at the 2nd July meeting, and then certainly, if all that comes together and we've got clarity, then we go to August. August is where the actions would be. If there ends up being no clarity, Mayor, to go back to your original question, yes, you can stay where you are today, which would be that dark blue bar. And then at some point in the future, sometime between then and the five years, because you're going to have to do it in five, you would do this study and the process back over again. Does that make any sense?
Yes, but using that purple, I'm going to call it purple, my wife says I'm colorblind, the current and CAC average, that would involve setting a rate different than the 25%, or the half of the half. Right? We'd have to set a lower rate to get to that average.
It would involve setting a different rate than the 2022, because the other ones, just your recommendations are-
Yes, mathematically, it would.
It wouldn't be maintaining the 25 or the half of the half that we have at the moment, we would reduce that to get to that.
On my, on my previous slide, sir, it actually tells you the percent range is 18 to 21% of the max, if you take the average.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yes, it is a different multiplier.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Collins?
To be clear, from, from all of our staff, what we're doing today is, we've, we're having a public hearing, of course, we'll have public comments in a moment, I assume, but the action item on our agenda is to accept the, the report and the information provided, which would then give us a starting point if we choose as a council to dig into all the detail. That's our starting point.
Yes, yes, sir. That's correct.
Yes, we, we have to have this base study, so that six, or 7.3, it's receiving that study.
So we have it.
Now somewhere between here and there is all available.
All right, I think we're done here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 7.3 at 4:01 PM. And is there anyone here today wishing to speak in favor of this item? Or actually speak on the item at all?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman, my name's Chris Berry, 4303, 136. I did want to take a couple minutes to clarify a couple points that John had mentioned on the TIA in Amarillo. We did one of those, but the city had already some funds for one of the roadways, so we didn't actually have to do anything in that scenario. I have seen some of the agreements that did require developers to pave part of roads in Amarillo, so some of what he said was true, it's just Beadmo wasn't involved in those ones where developers did have to pave the road. And as far as Midland and Odessa, it's part of the ordinance that the developer pays for two-thirds, and the city reimburses for a third, and then that third that the developers on the hook for were allowable for impact fee credits. So I just want, want to make a couple of those clarifying points. And as the Chair of the CAC Committee, I just want to take a moment to thank staff and Kim Lee Horn for all their hard work, and the CAC Committee as well, we put a lot of time and conversation. I wish y'all guys could have been part of that. We had a lot of good discussion, I think would have helped give you some insight on the questions you're asking today, which are very good. And I hope we can come to a resolution between now and August on keeping these impact fees, whether our recommendation or somewhere in between what we're doing today. I think our goal is really, we want to see what's best for the city. You know, sometimes we had to take our developer hat on and put our city hat on, and think of it holistically and what's best for the city, and I felt like we did that pretty well. We had a lot of competing opinions, we had a lot of opinions, myself included, but we worked really hard to come up with what we thought was the right thing for the city. And the home builders came in and they gave their opinion, and we talked through a lot of things independently outside that meeting, so I feel like we have a lot of good input. We may be off on where we are landing from some of the, the developers and the builders, and what that looks like for them, but I just encourage you guys, let us know what we can do to help bridge any gap, but hopefully we can get across that road in, in August, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank that committee, because it had to be a lot to, to work out, but thank you, Chris, and, and your committee. I don't know if any of the others are here, but if you are, thank you so much for your time, because it's a lot to take in, and I think we all want to do what's best for the city, so we appreciate you.
All right, anyone else here today to speak on this item?
Counsel, Thomas Payne, I live at 15309 FM 1730. I'm going to be very succinct today. I don't promise I will be the next time I get in front of you about this subject, but I did want to stand up and try to bring some clarity to a couple of things. It's easy to get lost in the attempt to do the math. The council hired experts to do the math, and they have done the math, and that's what you see presented before you. So in terms of getting lost in the mathematics, conversations with the expert that the council hired to do the math would be the best way, if you want, to try to really dig into the details of, of the math itself. But suffice to say, Kim Lee Horn has done this all over the state many times, and so they didn't start from scratch in this process. I want to try to leave you with just a couple of really simple things. Impact fees originally were created as an attempt to more fairly distribute the cost of new development, period. Who was paying for it before impact fees? All of the citizens. So all of the citizens were equally bearing all of the cost of new development. Impact fees were created to more fairly distribute that cost, not to put it entirely on new development, but to more fairly distribute that cost to new development. This is a zero-sum game. Somebody is paying for the cost. If the city builds a street and there are no impact fees, then all of the citizens in the city, and all of the districts of the city, are equally sharing the cost of the construction of that new street. And I'll just add, a new street that some of those constituencies may never even see. They may never even see it, much less drive on it. So the concept is just to more evenly distribute the cost. In our first iteration, the committee recommended a certain structure of impact fees to the city, and that was a, basically a 50-50 split, trying to put it in the perspective that we're talking about it from. The council at that time, and I'm going to use not my words, but the words of others, watered that recommendation down and cut it, essentially, the way they put it, is they cut it in half. So they took the half that was supposed to be 50 on the, I'm going to call it the private side from whom the fees are collected, and they cut that in half to 25. But it's a zero-sum game. The 25 went to the other side, so now instead of a 50-50 split, it became a 75-25 split. So instead of a one-to-one split, it went to a three-to-one match. That's actually not cutting it in half, it's, it's causing a much greater impact distribution than that. And so the point I would want to make is, is this is a zero-sum game. Any amount that you take away from impact fees, you are putting on all of the citizens of Lubbock, Texas. And so it, this isn't, a lot of the things that are being talked about, in my opinion, are, they're down in the weeds, that aren't really what matters here. are, they're down in the weeds that aren't really what matters here. The current recommendation from the committee keeps the current structure that we're calling 75-25 in place and simply applies that structure to the new numbers that are provided by the experts that were hired to come up with the current numbers. So what was the reason for the restudy? It's because the numbers have changed. The cost of constructing streets is dramatically higher today than it was five years ago. So all things being equal, the numbers would be more, just because of that cost. In addition, the distribution of development in the city is changing. There's more development occurring in some areas than there were five years ago, really six years ago, and less in others relative to each other. And so again, the effort here is toward fairness. Fairness between the distinction between the cost of impact fees in different service areas and fairness in the distribution of the cost of new construction for new development in the city of Lubbock. And so the simple way I'd give you to think about this is, anything you vote to reduce the recommended structure from the committee is a vote toward unfairness to the citizens in general, who are not in the developing area. And if you think about it that way, I think it gives you a little clearer perspective on what you're entertaining when you talk about decreasing impact fees or leaving them like they are. If you leave them like they are, then you are unfairly leaving the cost of new development disproportionately, even more so, on the non-developing parts of the city. So I'll just give you that to think about. One other thing, and this is just an example, but you have a lot of constituencies who are always arguing against impact fees and against raising impact fees. And I think it would be beneficial to step back and look at the fact that a lot of those same constituencies who would argue against impact fees are buying lots to build in the 2026 parade of homes at the Red Feather Development, which could not exist in 2026 without impact fees. Impact fees are the reason and the only reason that Quaker Avenue is built. Otherwise, without impact fees, it would still be a dirt road today. There would be insufficient access to the lots in the Red Feather Development. Fire marshal would not allow that, so it wouldn't be in the parade of homes. So the same people that are arguing against, against impact fees are benefiting from the fact that they exist, because those lots in the 2026 parade would not exist without impact fees. And when I say it's the only reason, I mean the sole reason that Quaker Avenue is being built is because impact fees exist. Without them, it would still be a dirt road, and we don't know, no telling for how long. And, and there are many other examples of how impact fees have enabled the construction of bond projects. And that is the whole point here. As the city engineer, current one and previous one, said to the impact fee committee many times in presentations, "The point of impact fees is to get streets built." That's a quote. They've said it over and over again. And I'll say it, that is the point of impact fees, when you only have them for streets, to get streets built. And so with impact fees, we have the potential for developers to do development agreements, to get credits for the impact fees, to build streets. Quaker Avenue is the current prime example that would not exist without impact fees and therefore the credits developers can get for spending their money. So just to give you a perspective, Quaker Avenue is approximately a $4.2 million project in its current iteration. The city is going to spend approximately $1,200,000 toward the construction of that $4.2 million project, and if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. City Manager will correct me if I am, but I believe the city's part of that is now being paid out of impact fees. He's telling me I'm correct, and I thought I was. So think about that for a minute. You have a $4.2 million roadway that is being built from private contribution and city impact fees that would otherwise not be built. So when you entertain this, take whatever time you need to, to find out whatever information you need, to understand this well enough to act on it, please, before you act, and particularly act to decrease the impact fees again, like was done the first time. Our impact fee structure is not sufficient to keep up with our street construction needs, as recommended, just as the first time, when it was cut from 50-50 to 75-25, we weren't going to have enough money. The same constituencies who argued vehemently originally for no impact fees or lower impact fees are now going to stand before you and complain that we haven't collected more impact fee money. The same exact people who caused the decrease in the structure and caused the lesser collection of impact fees are now going to stand in front of you and complain that we haven't collected more money in impact fees. Hopefully I've helped. It's my intention to help. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Anyone else wants to speak to this agenda item?
Good afternoon. I'm Jordan Wheatley, 3917, 114th Street, here in Lubbock. I represent the Impact Fee Task Force today, West Texas Home Builder Association, Lubbock Association of Realtors, Lubbock Apartment Association, Chamber of Commerce, grand total 4,800 member businesses here in Lubbock. I want to start out first, before I say anything, by just saying I have a tremendous amount of respect for everybody in this room. I really do. This council, our city manager, the staff, I feel like right now we have the very best staff in engineering, planning and development that we've ever had. I really do, honestly believe that. I can make a call today and get an answer back like that on something that's extremely complicated, and they will turn your call. With that said, I cannot believe how much time and money we have spent on this program. I can't believe it. I'm brain boggled by this. We have spent six years on this, well over 100 meetings, probably another 100 outside of council on this, and we have spent $5 million with this program, and we have 14 to show for it, but we spent $5 million? We rounded down our last bond, $5 million, that passed for optics, so it would look better. We saved $5 million last city council to try to make our sales tax deal work. We, we saved $5 million in one meeting. I, I, I just, I don't get it. This group is close, has closely been monitoring this, this process from the very beginning, and we believe it's time to turn the light out on this program, quite simply because we have the greatest minds in all of Lubbock in this room right now, and we are completely focusing on the wrong things. We're completely off task. The elephant in the room right now is that we passed the bond in 2009, and then we had a gap between 2009 and 2022, when that next one passed. That's the, that's the problem. We cannot do that ever again. If you look at this from a 16-year altitude and really just step back from all this brilliant math and look back, that's what happened. We had a huge gap, but this, these people and these groups that I, that we're representing today, 4,800 member businesses, we saw that gap, and we rallied together in 2022 and 2024, took the calls from then mayor at the time and this mayor now, Mr. McBrayer, hey, we need some help to get some bonds passed. We busted our tails to educate and raise funds and promote the city of Lubbock that how far we were behind on roads, and they passed. We have $304 million in the last two years raised as a result, dwarfing this $5 million that we've raised and spent, or that we've spent in the last six years on this program? Not to mention how much we spent on consultants to raise $14 million? We're off task altogether. I think that the solution going forward, and I've spoke with a lot of you one-on-one, is we have got to get serious about future road bond planning right now. You guys all have the, the ability right now to put a stake in the ground and say, we're going to get serious about road bond planning. We're going to get serious about this. We're going to quit looking at math of $5 million and all the other myths that have come up as a result of trying to justify a broken impact fee program. We're going to quit it. I think it's time to set this, this program and these fees at zero and move on and get serious. We need one representative from each district to represent and be on a roadway planning committee. And let's get serious about this. Use our minds that we have here. Use our local consultants that are here, some of them are here today, that work for free for us almost every day on behalf of the city. Let's tap into that. I was going to save all this for the next hearing, but I just, I couldn't get past hearing a lot about this stuff today, so I had to jump up, but we urge you guys to deny this report. I asked you six months ago to deny it and not spend $150,000 on it, or whatever was spent on it, that gave you a bunch of calculus III that is just, to me, worthless. Our bond packs rallied together, and we had three meetings. Each bond got this thing done with very little expense, with consultants and hearings and notices and posts and arguments and news and social media. It was just a very simple thing that we all came together and got it done. Growth does pay for growth. I don't know who thinks it doesn't. As far as the West Texas Home Builder Association, we've had 75 years of parade of homes. We were going to have a parade of homes with or without this impact fee program, and we're going to continue having parade of homes without impact fees. We had three other choices for that particular site that previous gentleman's talking about. As, as far as developer agreements, we've been doing developer agreements since the beginning of time. Look at Milwaukee. Milwaukee was done and rallied together in the same manner with local developers. And look at the tax base that Milwaukee has now. There was no impact fees used on Milwaukee. I can do a developer agreement right now with the city, and I don't care about impact fee credits. I don't care about them. I don't go buy property hoping that I'll get an impact fee credit. I don't care anything about them. I appreciate you guys' time. I'll be back at the next hearing. I don't know what else I can say. I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Victoria Whitehead, and I live in District 6, 4514, 11th Street. Also, just kind of want to reiterate some of what Jordan said, but will not repeat. We've had 75 years of the parade of homes, and the fact that that road was potentially not done did not stop us from choosing to say, let's build houses, let's create an event in our community that's going to cause buzz and stir and excitement for new homeowners and help small businesses here in town, builders sell homes to help our community. We have a housing shortage, so we're not sitting here picking parades based on roads, and I really hope you take it to our heart and to, and take that to your heart, 75 years of the parade of homes. This past month, we welcomed 16,000 adults through three gates, celebrating our local economy, celebrating what it means to build homes here in West Texas. And I just, I was also going to kind of save this for next time, but I think it's super relevant to sit here. The last couple of times we've talked about new growth, we've heard, heard public comments, new growth doesn't pay for new growth. Home builders did a study. I've got 75 pages of calculus III-style math that looked at one square mile of Milwaukee to Frankfurt, 64 to like 96. And what we did was we wanted to get the real data, because we wanted to answer, the answer as a board and as an association, what does it really mean to develop Lubbock? And what does it mean to have multifamily and single-family and commercial? This example here. That exact development in our community in 2003 produced 1,312 single-family homes, 712 multifamily units, 100, or $433 million in one-time local income, $63.7 million in annual recurring income, 5,888 local jobs, 14,005 jobs supported permanently after occupancy. Local jurisdictions benefit from $63.3 million, our local, like here, not state, Lubbock County, City of Lubbock, Water District, et cetera. $63.3 million in one-time revenue from taxes, fees and charges. In addition to that, $35.3 million in annual recurring revenue from property taxes, utilities, hospital charges and more. This is one square mile off of Milwaukee. Imagine what 114th and Quaker is doing. Imagine what 114th and Slade is doing. You know, we sit there, and I think for me, I started with the CAC process seven, eight years ago. I was heavily pregnant during the process and had my baby. I cannot tell you how much of a frustration it is as a young leader in this community to see people continue to argue about equity for new Lubbock, old Lubbock, new growth, old growth. I live at 10th and Quaker. I love my neighborhood. I am invested there, but I also work for the Home Builders Association, and I see the value of the partnership that has to be at play as someone who lives in the middle of town to those who are developing and building outside of town. I hate the division that gets created in the discussions of equity. I mean, we could sit here and pull property tax records and say, this district produces X amount of property taxes and this does this, and, I mean, these sales taxes, what if we did sales taxes like impact fees? What if we let sales taxes from South Lubbock not go to North Lubbock? That's creating a divisive Lubbock. That's not the community that we're here to support and grow. As someone who, again, I'm invested in this community, my husband and I choose to live here, I sincerely ask that you consider what Jordan's talking about, what our associate, association is talking about. Create the lift committee, create the road bond, or, you know, it's actually a future infrastructure committee, because we also have water and wastewater we got to solve, right? But help us, especially those who are choosing to live here, say, let's like now look at the plan. Let's create a plan. Let's stop going council by council to say, this works now, this- Let's stop going council by council to say, 'This works now, this works now, this works now.'" Let's create a plan. Like, I've come from the water world, we have a 50-year water year plan. You guys took some historical moves with Governor Abbott signing a bill the other day. Why can't we do that for roads? Why can't we take the time that we're doing and put it towards something greater? So I ask your consideration, let's pause the program. We're spending a lot of dollars on it. Let's pause the program. Let's look for solutions that give us the best return on investment, and let's continue to work together for a greater, united Lubbock community.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item 7.3? If not, I'll close this public hearing at 4:30. Well now, I'll take up item 7.3.1 on our agenda. This is associated with the public hearing, and this would be a motion to approve item, agenda item 7.3.1, which is a resolution, considering that resolution is a resolution receiving the land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and capital improvements advisory committee recommendations associated with the 2025 impact fee restudy. So is there a motion to accept this recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and second? Any discussion? Mr. Gashin?
Thank you. I have a few things to say about this. First, I'll note that our agenda item is to receive this report. It's not, our vote is not an endorsement or approval of the contents of the report, and it doesn't commit us to any particular course of action today. This is a report that's required by state law, and so it has to be done. And I want to say thank you to our outstanding staff, consultants, and everyone who's volunteered their time to serve on the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee as well. So thank you for helping us meet this state requirement. This report, though, is just one of many different ways that we can evaluate and implement land use assumptions. I think the decision's not as simple as just doing the math. If, it's ultimately a legislative decision. We don't need to substitute the judgment of this council for outside engineers or national traffic studies. And I think we've seen with our questions today, that there's a risk of relying on mathematical formulas can create some unfair and, and even nonsensical outcomes, like in the, in the different treatment between coffee shops. Ultimately, this council has to set the policy for what we believe is the best interest of our growing city. Now, as a bit of history, when, when the council, previous council first implemented impact fees, there was some discussion that it might be a, a really meaningful alternative to road bonds. But after several years, we've seen that impact fees have never raised enough money to fund the city's annual construction plans. Local developers have been successful in building roadways like Milwaukee, that have contributed tremendously to the city. But really, major roadway projects typically required bond elections for the city to raise the necessary capital for our contribution to it. Elections are a fair way to raise money, and, and ultimately to raise property taxes, because it's the voters deciding. The bonds also have the advantage that they are both, they're based on real projects that have been bid with real numbers. They're not theories, or assumptions, or possible ideas about how people might visit different land uses. We've also seen that voters have, have approved and disapproved bond proposals in the past, which gives me a lot of confidence about using that as, as a method. So if the impact fees have not been a significant way to fund our projects, what has the effect been in the last few years? We think what we've seen from impact fees is that they've had a strong anti-growth effect. And in retrospect, perhaps this isn't surprising, because other cities have deliberately implemented impact fees for the goal of reducing or trying to stop city growth. And some of the strongest advocates of anti-growth, anti-capitalist policies are big fans of impact fees. Now, that's not at all to characterize all advocates for impact fees, but I think that there's a real recognition in some circles that they are a tool for anti-growth and anti-development. This particular land use assumption would, would in effect almost double the impact fees that are paid by new and, and growing businesses here in Lubbock. And like Councilman Collins said, Lubbock is a small business town. I think it's very important to all of us that we keep that small business friendly character in our community. Since the council started considering these proposals, I have heard from many small and local businesses that are already struggling under the current impact scheme, impact fee We've, we've seen projects that small businesses can't afford to pay for now with the current impact fees, and I'm afraid of what the consequences would be if we double those. I'm afraid that it could bring growth to a real standstill. And that's a problem, because the city of Lubbock depends on the growth of property tax and sales tax that's brought by new homes and, and new businesses. I would, I would respectfully disagree with the idea that growth is a zero-sum game. I think it would be more appropriate to say that the rising tide raises all boats, because we have, for over a century, enjoyed steady, sustained growth in our community without the use of impact fees. Now unfortunately, in the last few months, we've seen that start to slow down with slowing and declining, uh, sales tax revenue, for example. So when it comes time for this council to set impact fees, I would encourage everyone to join me in, in putting Lubbock back on track for a policy that enables another century of steady, sustained growth.
Thank you, Mr. Gashin. Anyone else? All right, I see no one else wishing to further discussion, so we'll now take the vote on, this is again, just receiving this report. So all in favor of receiving the report, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed to receiving the report, say nay. I hear none. The motion carries unanimously. All right. Having exhausted all items on our agenda, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending.